Hi, we're going to open the meeting of February, oh, February, oh my God, May 22nd of the Board of Selectmen. We have kind of a busy agenda tonight with interviews of the town administrator candidates. We will start that in a couple of minutes. However, we have one thing that we've been asked to approve before that, which is the reserve fund transfer for the annual town report. And the amount was 1,496 and 74 cents.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. June, do you need this to go back to finance? You are assigned.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
Good evening, Steve.
Good evening, Select Board.
I think we're all prepared for this evening, although if you have anything you want to share with us, procedure, or...
That's an invitation.
Sure.
Roger told me it'd be all right if I stood right about here.
Absolutely. Speak loudly so the crowd can hear you.
That's good. Chris said that if she had a few minutes she wanted to kill, that I was the one to do it. So, she said if I described the process that we went through, that might be helpful for this evening. So that's what I'm gonna do. And the first thing I thought I might wanted to say was to point out that everyone in Berlin has been part of the process. And that's an important point to make, because I've learned that Berlin sometimes doesn't want to claim credit for what you've done here. But as professionals coming in, Bob and I have noticed there's great things that happened here. Your land, your finances, a lot of good things, and you should take pride in that. And the candidates are noting that. So when people come in here, and they're professionals too, and they say nice things about it, just say, "Oh yeah, we did that." And now you've turned your attention to the management side. And you, there's good reason for it. You have audit reports, your selectmen know that there are things that need to be addressed. You know, a lot of your professionals here that work here know that things need to be done. So you have done some steps to address that. You've created an act. That's an important thing. Candidates like that, it means something. It takes months to do that. It went through a town meeting. That was an important step, because that was not a close vote here. It went right through. That was an important thing candidates were able to notice, and we were able to tell them. And you set a good salary. East of here, yes, we know that salaries are over $200,000. And we know west of here, they're less than $100, $140, Palmer was $140. You picked the right number, just enough to get the interest of candidates. And you had almost 70 candidates apply, 66 by the deadline, and a few more afterwards. I tried to convince Bob to apply, just so we could get to 70, just to have that nice round number. He wouldn't do it, but what can I say? So those three things just really helped us a lot in getting candidates. And so the first thing that we did was talk to the board. Long phone calls, quite a few long phone calls, actually. No complaints from the board, they've been very good. They all had a vision for the town. They all had a vision for the town administrator. All different speeds and how they wanted to get there, but it was all the same big vision so far as what we were concerned. And so we did that, and we had a couple of public forums that we did. Some of you people were there. And I, we got the input that we needed to create a profile, a written document that identified the town in such a way that the candidates could see what would be of interest to them, why the town might interest them. All that stuff went on a website with additional documents the town created. The Act, the profile, some other documents people provided, fat improvement plan. And we went ahead and created an advertisement. We tried to create it in a way that there were a couple of things that caught the candidates' interest. First-time town administrator. That's got a ring to it for professionals, that they like that idea. Obviously, they're not, they applied. So that worked out well, that's a 30-day period. And at the end of that, we had that 66 people, and then we had a couple of people that came later. We created the email address for people to write to, and we had, Bob is our best recruiter, he's just excellent. So he goes out and talks to people and said, "You know, you're interested. It's now the right time for you. You might like Berlin." And they came. Then, we went through all of these and brought in 16 and sent them essay questions. Now, we made it look like there were only three, but in question number two, we punched in like three or four questions. Because we were very interested in knowing their skill sets. This is a small town, there's not many employees, and there's very few full-time employees. So these candidates had to be able to come in and be able to do some of these jobs, not be able to tell people how they're doing. So, we focused in on things like that. And after those essays, we did background researches on the web. And we brought the number down to eight into telephone interviews. There, we could ask questions and beat them up and do what we wanted to. And it was very offline, very informal, and we could take the question where we wanted to. And at that point, we were ready to bring them to Berlin, the search committee. Oh, we had a heck of a time getting that search committee to be on, didn't we? Wow. When it happened, it really worked good, didn't it? It worked well. They came together, organized questions, we ran six candidates through. Long day that was, it was a good day. Good quality candidates, but the committee seemed to know who they wanted, what they wanted. Then we worked it down to three. That brings us to tonight, brings us to the Board of Selectmen. We've got good candidates, the selectmen are prepared, they're ready, they know what they're gonna do for questions, where they're gonna go. And after tonight, we will continue working with the board on the contract. We will continue after the hire is done, to make sure we have a successful relationship, because we want this to work. And we thank you, because we think we have good candidates, a good town, and we think it's gonna work out.
Great. Thank you.
There you go. Right on the dot.
Yeah, very good.
You want it again?
Sure. Hi.
I'm Crystal.
Nice to meet you, Kristin Lass.
Lisa Isak.
Nice to meet you. Where would you like to be?
Kristin, have a seat right here, so the audience can see you and can be picked up on the mic.
Thank you.
It's quite a pleasure to have you with us this evening.
Thank you, it's very nice to be offered to come and meet you all.
Um, we do have some questions.
Sure.
Um, I don't know if you care, if you'd like to start, Lisa, or...
We're sure that you did a great deal of research as a candidate for this position. Please give us your impressions of Berlin. Tell us why you're a good fit for this community, and what will you, what will you bring to this town that may be lacking?
Sure. I'll do my best to answer all of those questions, but if you need to prompt me again, please let me know. So, I currently live in the town of Boylston, just about three miles away from here, and pass through Berlin all the time. I do my shopping here, visit farms, do apple picking, whatnot. So I knew a lot about Boylston from the exterior. But once the job posting became available, I started digging in a little bit more to learn more about your boards and commissions, your volunteer work, your departments, the budget, how things operate and run. And I'm very impressed by the way that things have gone over the past 150 years with just a select board and very limited staff people. So, I have reviewed your annual reports, your master plan, many other documents that have been on the website, have reviewed some of your meetings that have been taped, that have been able to do that. And I know a lot of the roads in town, but I've taken the time to go out and really drive some of the roads that I've never been on. So those are some of the things I've done to prepare for the interview. I'm sorry if I didn't answer all of the questions, is there anything else I can expand upon?
Just what will you bring that may be lacking?
Sure. Well, I have an extensive planning background and community development background by training, and have worked my way through to understanding municipal government overall in the assistant town manager role with the town of Shrewsbury. I started as a consultant in the land planning realm for a consulting firm, understanding open space and recreation plans, master plans, permitting, and then moved my way to be the town planner for the town of Shrewsbury, and understanding their zoning bylaws, the way they operate, rules and regulations. And over time, the manager there had allowed me to expand my knowledge in other realms, such as regional health districts, I oversee that department now, veteran services, council on aging, building and planning, and economic development. And so I think I would bring a well-encompassing, well-rounded position to the town of Berlin.
Great. Can you describe the relationship between the town administrator and the select board?
Well, I could say that it's going to be a very new relationship. I have read the Act several times and have gone through it, highlighting what the roles of the select board would be versus the role of the administrator. And certainly, there will be some back and forth, a lot of back and forth, I can say, growing pains probably, but also collaboration on how the board sees the town moving forward, and how the administrator can use the professional skills learned to make sure that things are done by the rules, by the book, lots of mass general law, lots of case law, lots of coordination. I think that the town administrator can provide the stability of being the point person between not only the select board, but the other boards and commissions, to make sure there's a steady presence in town overall for any topic of discussion or any project moving forward.
Okay. I've got a multi-question.
I'm gonna write down.
All right, I'll go slow. So one morning, the chair calls you and directs you to handle an issue differently than what we voted on.
Okay.
What do you do? That's one question.
Okay.
The chair then tells you that she speaks for another member of the board. What do you do? This is a matter that was discussed in executive session, and a reliable source tells you that these selectmen have been discussing the matters with others. What do you do?
Sure. So, the selectman calls me, or comes into the office.
Yep, the chair calls you and says, "Hey, I want you to handle an issue, but it's different than how we voted."
Sure. So, I think just having, continuing a very open and honest discussion, recapping the meeting and how the proceedings were, recapping any backup information that was discussed, and cautioning that select person of the public ethics law, that this is what the mass general law states, this is what the ethics law states, how can I help you understand how the board voted, how can I help you understand getting to the position of where the board was at that time, and moving forward in that capacity?
So, she goes on to tell you that, "Don't worry about that, I speak for the board." What do you do?
I would caution that member stating that everyone speaks for themselves. If the board votes, it's a collective vote, and that's recorded, but to urge that board member that it's, to be very cautious of speaking for other board members, as it's not allowed.
And then to throw the monkey wrench in it, well, this was done in the executive session.
Sure.
But, somebody is telling you that we've been chatting all over town about it. What do you do?
Um, I think I would try to find out the facts first, from each individual board member, to understand where each board member is coming from, and educate the board as much as possible about that aspect of the executive session and the laws associated with that, and then move forward in a fashion that's necessary, perhaps request that town council be involved, if necessary, with the permission and approval of the board, though.
Good, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Berlin has excellent department heads. Describe the town administrator's role and relationship with department heads. How would you establish a leadership position? How will you promote communication and teamwork within and across departments?
These are all very multi-question.
We're trying to squeeze as many into one question as possible, I guess.
I think the role of the town administrator to the department head, first and foremost, is to allow the department head to run their department as they see fit within the confines of the law and the charter. But to be that continuity, again, to bring the department heads together, define commonalities. So if you have the highway superintendent working on a roadway, making sure that, the building inspector may know if there's some sort of construction work going on, to collaborate, I think that's very important. I think the town administrator's role with the department heads is to provide common vision for the town, to communicate what the select board's vision is, communicate what other strategic plans or master plans that have been done, to bring that forward, and to provide them with the support that they need to run their departments, to educate them about how the budget process works, if they'd like something new in their budget, how to go about that, to present that to the finance committee and the select board. So, and then you were talking about communicating...
How will you promote communication and teamwork within and across departments?
Sure. I think, I mentioned this in my screening interview, but I believe this stands true, is communication and teamwork are, start at the top. So, if I'm not communicating properly, or showing that I am working as a team, the people under me would not be doing that either. So that's very important, to lead by example in that fashion. And if someone is not communicating properly, or being part of the team, having a sit-down with them to understand what their issues are, what they see as perceived problems, and working that out, understanding if they need training on certain items, if they need to go to, you know, a communication exercise to help them with that. But I think that it's very important, I think the more people know, the better educated they are, and the better they can make a decision moving forward.
How will you keep yourself informed of the activities of your staff? And how would you promote a positive work environment?
I think the number one, let me just write this down. I think the number one key to keeping myself informed of the staff is to let them know that I would have an open-door policy, that anything that they need to discuss, please come to me and talk to me about that. But I think it's also important to go to where they are, right? Visit the highway garage and understand what the operations are there, visit the library, what is going on there. Hold either team leadership meetings or departmental meetings with people to understand what's going on, and how they would like to communicate with me, and how I would like to communicate with them. So I think that's vital. I don't think that I need to know every little pothole that's filled, or line that's striped along the road, but I think if there's a big issue, that there, you know, there's something with the police department, that I would want to be informed by the police chief, or if there's a major fire event, I would want to be informed, because I would hate for one of the select board members to give me a call and not be informed of a major issue that had occurred. And if I were, I'd do my best to get as much information as possible. And then positive work environments, I think, again, coming to work every day, ready to do a job, and again, leading by example, creating a positive attitude, as I would work day-to-day, understanding where people are having trouble and issues, and trying to work through that with them, of, is it a technology piece that they need training on, or is it another team member that they need to bring on board, or outsource, or how can we, how can we have fun, right? Do we bring, have a team-building activity outside of the building to have fun and create that sense of activity?
Good. And this one, I'll give you a moment to think of.
Okay.
All right. Please describe the most difficult employee you've ever experienced. What made it difficult? And thinking back, how would you have handled it differently?
So, I have been fortunate to work with excellent employees, so I can give you, maybe not most difficult, in the sense of most difficult, but there have been situations where an employee goes about their work and does not plan to use the protocol that is set in place. And I don't want to give any specific examples, because I know we're on television, and I don't want to compromise anyone in that sense. But, you know, I've had employees who I've asked over and over again to try to meet deadlines, and they're very easy deadlines, like posting an agenda on time, or delivering a plan on time. And it really takes understanding what is going on with them. Is it something personal in their life that they're not able to meet these? Do they not have the resources to go about that? And generally, it's all come out in a positive aspect, that we get the product going on, but it's really putting that employee on a type of, a path to lead to success. So, how can they produce for you in a way that is mutually beneficial? How can you get them to produce for you, which is not taking away from what they think is right, but is what is best for the town?
Great, thank you.
And I think, the question, how would you handle it different? I think, in every aspect where I'd have to, where I would have, where I have dealt with a difficult employee, or a difficult employee situation, I always reflect, you know, what could I have done a little bit differently, and then use that as a tool moving forward.
Thank you.
Okay.
Describe the approach you would take to address the desires of members of the community, to keep it like it is, as well as those in the community who want to see new ideas, innovations, businesses which may change the nature of the community, but expand the tax base. What steps would you take to address all needs effectively, and in the best interest of the town?
Sure. Well, I think hearing from everyone, listening to what people have to say, and understanding where they're coming from. Have they lived here all of their life? And have they been in a rural farming community? And are they adverse to commercial development? Why are they adverse to that? Understanding the situation. And then, listening to the other side, those that want growth or want change, and why did you move to the community, or why do you live in the community, and why do you want change? And then finding tools to mesh those two things together, to find win-win solutions for each party. I know that you're never gonna make everyone happy. That's part of municipal government, that's part of life. But if you can find pieces that each side can hang their hat on and be somewhat happy, I think that that's very important. And with a small town, I'm sure a lot of people know each other, and a lot of people talk, and getting out into the community and understanding, you know, do people meet at the park at this time, and should I go there and listen in? Or, you know, this business is really important, and what's going on in that business, and what makes that special? So, the town administrator should certainly immerse themselves in the community to understand those issues, and then help work through them. But also seek out individuals that may help with the solution, or help with the problem. I don't think it's the town administrator's role to figure out every problem, they need to come together and seek out individual, excuse me, seek out others' ideas as well.
You go with that one? Okay. As the new town administrator, how would you evaluate the current structure, effectiveness and efficiencies of the various town departments? And how would you approach making any changes you believed were necessary?
Sure.
I can ask the next part, when you're finished, if you want to answer that part first.
So, I think it's important for a new town administrator to come in and spend some decent time understanding how the operation currently works, meeting with the boards and commissions, especially the select board, meeting with the department heads and the staff, and not be one to change things right away. I think that it's important to understand exactly how the town runs today, in order to assess that situation, and then make recommendations. And the timing of those recommendations could vary, based upon the severity of the issue. If the board feels that there's a severe issue at the time, addressing that head-on, but fully understanding what that issue is, fully learning about the issue. I'm not wanting to jump into something just to jump into it, you really need to evaluate what the problems and the issues are. So, I think that is, and the question of the screening, one of the questions of the screening committee is, do you feel that it's a benefit or a hindrance to start July 1st, once the budget has already been set? And one of my responses was, I think that that's a benefit, because I could understand exactly how the town has been operating, and then make little notes along the way of how to incrementally, perhaps make changes to the budget, or any structure at that time. But I don't think that any rash decisions should be made.
Okay. And how would you evaluate the teams delivering services to the town? Please include any relevant experience you may have from prior employment.
So, I think you would do evaluation on several levels, knowing that the town staff is quite limited. I think your levels are department heads, staff, and boards and commissions. And you should, I think that I would approach the evaluation of visiting each of those boards and commissions, or departments, to just first understand how they're operating, understanding from department heads if they're seeing any issues with particular employees or resources. And then, moving forward in that fashion, I think my specific experience in evaluating teams is, you know, seeing what other communities are doing as well. So, Berlin doesn't live in a vacuum. You are one of the smaller communities in this region, but you can learn from what other communities are doing, and poll. I think another important thing would perhaps to do a community survey of some sort, reach out to the residents of where they feel that there are needs lacking, or advancements that are needed, to do that. I can be honest that I have not done performance evaluations in the public side, I have done performance evaluations on the private side. So, I think that that's an important thing. I think that town employees who are measured on performance provide better work products, move forward, and be looking forward to working on that effort as well. So I think evaluation of teams is a two-pronged approach. I think it's how the employees perform their jobs, but it's how the departments and the boards and commissions work as well, together.
Very good. And I, of course, have the longest one here.
Okay.
And it seems to be a bit of a follow-on to Lisa, so I'll read through the first thing, and then we'll chunk it down. The town administrator plays a key and active role in the community development, rated to issues in Berlin. The town wishes to expand its tax base. However, there are competing thoughts as to what type of development is desirable, and how to control development in order to preserve community character. Tell us how you will help the community answer these critical questions. I saw your writing, so I'll keep going. What approach would you take to achieve consensus? And then, speaking of the tax base, as in other towns, there are concerns about the size of tax bill. And at some point, the town administrator will be a determining factor in the size of the tax bill. Describe the extent of the relationship between the town administrator and our tax bill.
Okay, very interesting question. I think that, in terms of your community development approach, that the town of Berlin has been very proactive, more proactive than towns that have a staff, that have municipal planning staff. You have created master plans and open space and recreation plans to clearly understand where you'd like to see development growth, and where you'd like to see conservation and protection. I think that you have one of the benefits of growing your tax base commercially on the fringes of your town, because your priority is to maintain the character of the central portion of the town, as I see it. Other people may see differently. And I think you talked about building consensus, and those master planning processes are very important. I have been involved in those processes for over 15 years now, and have seen different techniques, different charrettes, different surveys, different collaboration between both residents and businesses, to bring people together to understand consensus. When you talk about controlling development, you're talking about a real-world scenario, that you do, that the board, or the town, does not want to see much more residential or commercial development. Am I correct in that?
The opinion is split.
Okay.
How was that? Was that skirting? Was that okay? Truly, it would depend upon who you would talk to. Some would say, "Yes, let's bring in business, let's get the tax bill down." Others would say, "Nope, we're good."
Sure. Well, the town has been proactive in splitting the tax rate, so I think that it's important to poll businesses, to understand what their thoughts are of the split tax rate, why they chose to locate in your town versus another town with a single tax rate, whether they feel that the location is perfect, or your services are well-suited with them. Again, I feel like I'm rambling because this is a very long question. But, again, achieving consensus, I think, not only comes from the residents of town, but your businesses, because you would not be surviving without your businesses. There are a lot of other communities who envy Berlin for the amount of commercial tax base that you have and that you've greatly taken pride and effort in understanding where those growth and expansions should go. And you've done an excellent job creating some of those developer agreements that some communities with staff don't have the foresight of doing. So, you're reaping the benefits of that as well.
So, what is your relationship between the town administrator and the tax bill?
Sure. That is a question I've never heard before. So, the town, you know, obviously, the town administrator would, and I'll take it a few different approaches, that the residents would say, "I pay your salary," right? So, that's very forthright. So, you should be doing what I would like you to be doing. And I would say, well, I'm serving the entire community, not only the residents, but the businesses. I think, so that's a very blunt answer. But, relationship of the town administrator to the tax bill is that the town administrator has the ability to negotiate with the different departments of how the taxes are spent on certain things and show residents how that can be split. They have the ability to engage business and engage residents in the process and the ability to add staff or cut staff, so increasing or decreasing the tax bill. Obviously, we're held to the 2.5% without an override, so that's a limiting factor. But there are other ways to reduce the tax bill that the town administrator could help with. Creative approaches such as regionalization, grant writing, bringing other development agreements into town. So, I think that there's a multifaceted approach for how the town administrator relates to the tax bill.
Thank you. I know I gave you the long one. Sorry about that.
That's okay. This is the right time.
I would just say, is there anything else you'd like to share with us since we have five minutes left?
Sure. Thank you again for having me in this evening. I understand that you have a large job ahead of you. I think this is very exciting for the town to be hiring their first town administrator. As you may have seen on my materials, I have a great deal of background with many facets of municipal government. Although my training is in planning and community development, I work hand-in-hand with the current town manager in Shrewsbury on budget preparation for all departments, union negotiation, grant writing, human resources. I was the de facto human resources coordinator before we hired our first coordinator about eight months ago. So, I understand, you know, the hiring process, workers' comp, general insurance, and the like. And I really pride myself on being able to listen, not only to my employees, but also the residents of the town, the businesses of the town. And I know we talked about that a lot. But I never go forward and make a decision just on the spot. I like to have the majority of the information. I know that there's many rules and regulations and laws that you must follow and help to guide the board. But I certainly appreciate the foresight of the town of Berlin thinking that they want to move forward with professional management because that's very important for the success of a community.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions for us?
I do if there's time, but I don't want to. So, I'll ask a question that I asked of the steering committee. And either you can answer it collectively or individually. But what qualities are you looking for in the town administrator that was not portrayed in the job description or the job ad?
Want me to go first?
Sure.
I would say some of the things that you just talked about, which would be how you make a decision and not jumping to a conclusion. As I said to Steve a couple of times, that one of the most important things to me is finding somebody with patience, that they will be able to look at all of the different facets and consider them all before jumping into a decision and then really having a thoughtful approach.
I'm looking for an advocate for our employees. I think that they haven't had one.
Can you speak up, Lisa? I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm looking for an advocate for our employees. I think that they really haven't had one. And I think that's something that the town administrator can bring to the table.
And I've got three. I always have the most. Sorry about that. The first one is that looking for someone who can balance, and you had alluded to it several times, that you listen, but you always question. That it's never, hey, Kristen, the answer's seven. Well, how did you get there? To understand the thought process behind something. And then, moving a little bit forward, is for the ability for the TA to go on a fact-finding mission, whether it's through a formal process or whether through its informal process. You had talked about, you know, people hanging around and going to talk to them. Let me introduce you to the General Store and Dump on a Saturday. You know, those would be places where you could get it. And someone who is not afraid to say no, but being able to explain why. No is the correct answer and how you got there. And being able to understand that sometimes no is not the favorite answer, but it's the right answer.
Understood. Great. And then, what would you see as the top priorities if there's time? I apologize.
Sure.
What would you see as the top priorities for the town administrator in the first 90 to 120 days?
I would say just being able to evaluate. I think it is important that you come in and evaluate what we've got and see what's working before you say, "We've got to change this, 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 and this." So, I think that would be most important.
I would guess you'd have to start pretty early looking at the current budget process because it's got some issues. And it probably needs to start a lot earlier than it does.
And I think the biggest thing for me is just to immerse yourself. You know, and honestly, my expectation of the town administrator in the first 30 to 60 days, and don't take this the wrong way, is really not to do anything. Well, that's awful, but no, not to accomplish anything, but accomplish it as in saying, "Hey, I'm done here."
Collecting knowledge.
Yes. So that you're hearing and you're getting an understanding for the town. You know, as you talked, there are the townies. There are some who have been here a long period of time, there are some that are brand-new. And each will come with their certain thoughts and their beliefs of what they want to do. And somehow, you've got to balance out the thirds to get to the final answer.
Sure. Great. And what are your expectations for the town administrator in terms of staffing other boards and commissions other than the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee?
Staffing?
Or providing support, going to, attending meetings for other boards and commissions?
I'm guessing that I would leave that up to you. That would be, you would know if there was something pertinent that you needed to attend in order to understand it better. I think that's my advice to you.
I think initially, you would have to attend a lot of those meetings to start building the context and the relationships that you need to be successful here because we are run primarily by volunteers and a very small staff. So, in order to build those relationships is vital in that first period of time.
Absolutely. Any long-term, I'm talking more about long-term expectations of attending or staffing boards and commissions?
I think you're going to know where the hotspots are if you build those relationships. And those folks are, you know, I think they're eager to come and ask for help and support because they haven't had it. So, I think if you build those relationships upfront, they're going to let you know when they need you.
Okay. Great. I think that's all I have for this evening. Any other questions that you may have for me?
No. I mean, I have one comment. I would love for you, TA, you position, to be able to come to us with questions. Speaking personally, I don't speak for Chris, I don't speak for Lisa. I don't want to sit here and say, "You will, you must, therefore, you are."
Sure.
Because you're here, not for me, not for that one, not for Lisa, not for, you're here for everybody, all 3,000-some-odd of us in town. So, I would expect after a few months that you come back and after your observations, you're like, "Hey, I got some ideas, I want to run it by you," rather than, "Here's your things you're going to accomplish today."
Absolutely. Sure. Great. Well, thank you very much. It was very nice to meet you all.
Most pleasure. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Nice to meet you. Thank you. Thank you.
Do you want to slide in and do some business?
Find my next to.
Just a minute. Do you have your agenda?
Yeah. Yeah. No, I was just finding my next person. Yeah. And my information.
June ran off copies. I'm good.
So, let's see. We have approval of some minutes if we'd like to do that. The 20th, which was the last meeting. This is approval of the May 20th meeting minutes for the purposes of the special legislation that were.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, we are.
All right. And we have appointments of the people that we had talked about appointing, or we did appoint, but we didn't do it officially, to the Office Space Needs Study Subcommittee, term ending 5/31/2020. It's Tom Galvin, George Pendergast, David Smith, and Richard Smith. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we had a last-minute request to approve Matt Rogers for the Energy Committee.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Does anybody want to look at that? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Shall we? Yeah?
Are we ready?
Do we need to talk about this one? Or is that one alone?
Well, that's the last one we do after we've had the interviews.
Okay.
Air conditioning's on tonight. Kind of glad I wore a jacket. Are you freezing, Trish? Do you want to start again this time, Lisa?
Sure.
Thank you.
You said Tom?
Tom, yes.
Come on in, Tom.
Come on in.
Hi, Tom. Pegstone.
Tom.
Nice to meet you, Tom.
I'm Chris Keith. Nice to meet you.
Lisa Isaki.
Lisa.
Tom, have a seat here. I'd ask you to speak loudly so the folks in the back can hear you.
All right. All right.
Sound check?
Are we good?
There we go. All right. And we're going to begin with questions, and Lisa has the first one.
We're sure you did a great deal of research as a candidate for this position. Please give us your impressions of Berlin. Tell us why you're a good fit for this community and what you will bring to this town that may be lacking.
Thank you for that question. That's a great, I like that question. That's a great one. I like a lot of things about Berlin. As I was, as I was looking at what you all do, several things impressed me. I really, really like the mitigation fund. That was brilliant. I really liked the five-year rolling master plan that the Planning Board does. I think, I looked over the warrant for the last town meeting and it was written really well. It's sometimes hard to get warrant language right. Being the person who writes the warrant language for Conway, I was impressed with that. I thought it was very well put together. And I have taken some time to drive around town. I was just out at the conservation area on Pleasant Street and I saw a little bit, a little bit further down on Linden, I think there's a trailhead just past Lyman on the curve going up. Is there something going off on the side? It looks like there's a lot of nice land around here.
There is. There's a pond, actually, that I used to skate on as a kid. It's a horseshoe pond.
Oh, okay.
So, people will park and then head on in.
Yeah. So, there's a lot to like about the town. And why I would be a good fit, I think, is I did a similar project, if you want to call it that, job in Conway, taking a town that had not had a town administrator. Technically, they had had two town administrators, both of them served for about two months. So, I've been there for almost six years now. And I've had the opportunity to, I think, bring a number of best practices into the town that have set up a structure where now they are prepared to move forward. They had had in the past various structural difficulties. And I think, not all by myself, but with the team of town employees, I think we've worked through all of those. So, I have a good sense of how to bring a town into best practices and how to bring staff and residents along with that process.
Does that help? Describe the relationship between the town administrator and the Select Board.
The town administrator is hired by the Select Board and carries out the policies of the board. There is a sense in which the town administrator acts also as a central point of communication with other town boards that may be independent. So, there's a lot of that communication function that goes on that's not directly related to the Select Board. But always, I always report extensively to the Select Board on anything that I know is going on in town so that everyone is informed. I think that's one of the major benefits of having a position like this, is that you do have someone who is responsible and. of having a position like this, is that you do have someone who is responsible and hopefully anxious to make sure that everybody's on the same page. So in relation to the select board, I manage the policies that the select board decides on, implementing those policies. In terms of the rest of the town staff that I would be overseeing, that's more of a leadership position, trying to get everyone to work together. And so there are different roles of the town administrator. In terms of the select board, obviously, implementing your policies is the main one.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, ready?
I don't know. You have my questions.
So one morning, the chair calls you and directs you to handle an issue differently than that which the board voted. What do you do? The chair also tells you that she speaks for another member of the board. What do you do with that one? And then the last one, this is a matter that was discussed in executive session, but a reliable source tells you that the selectmen have been discussing this matter with others. What do you do?
Well, clearly, if the select board chair is saying that another select board member has, is in agreement, they've been discussing it outside of executive session. If I don't know about it. Yes, it's of course, this board would never do that. But in the instance that a board happened to be elected that did that, my responsibility is to the board as a whole. And it is the board that is the chief executive body of the town. And I really can't carry out an order from any select board member individually. I have to bring it to the board for either open discussion, or if it's an executive session matter, something in executive session. So I really would not be able to carry out any suggestion that I might get independently of, you know, certainly of significance. I have often gone and found out information for a select board member or something, you know, just to, you know, the general functions that I would carry out for anyone. I've done that individually. That's not a problem. But in terms of a decision that was made or a policy that's being made, that's something that has to be done by the board as a whole. And again, if it were a reliable source, that means that somebody's been talking outside of executive session. And that's not appropriate, so that's something to bring up in executive session. Again, I would express my observation and say, gee, it sounds like you've been talking to somebody outside of executive session, you know? That's really not a good idea for a number of reasons, and go on to to explain my perception of that, and then bring it up. There's no sense in in people's agendas trying to get in somewhere that's not open to the board as a whole, whether in open session or in executive session. That's not any way to run a town.
Thank you.
Sure.
Berlin has excellent department heads. Describe the town administrator's role and relationship with department heads. How would you establish a leadership position? How will you promote communication and teamwork within and across departments?
I really look forward to working with department heads because they are the people who know the most about their particular aspect of town work. And it may be that they have a perspective that is that has grown less than rosy over time based on their work with the town. It may be that they have retreated into their department a little bit and need to be need to be reintegrated into the town as a whole. I understand you have made a plan to receive monthly reports from department heads. That could continue as is, or that is a function that the town administrator could take over and report to you. And some of that can be a good idea because one of the things that I do is I act as a buffer both between the select board and department heads, and between department heads and the select board, so that all the communication can be on target and not charged and dealt with in a smooth manner.
Equally.
So, yes. Absolutely. So in terms of getting to work with each other, there is an awful lot of dealing with personalities. And I like to think that I'm reasonably good at that. And it's a different matter for each person. Sometimes it can take longer to earn authority. And I'm a firm believer that any authority in this position is earned, you know, not mandated, you know? That's the wrong way to go about it. And I look to support department heads in what they need for their departments. I like to advocate for their needs. I like to, you know, be able to point out that one department's needs may not, in any particular instance, take preference over another department's needs. So I think I would have a good relationship with each individual department head. And if there were problems between department heads, I would stress that the need is always to act professionally. And there's no law that says you have to like anybody, even a coworker, especially a coworker. But it's certainly necessary in a town for people to do their jobs professionally. And I would be one of the arbiters of that. And I think that I could express what that meant, and how to go about things in a way that took some of the personality out of it if they weren't getting along, and be reasonably professional in the way that they carried out their duties. I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. How will you keep yourself informed of the activities of your staff? And how would you promote a positive work environment?
Certainly promoting a positive work environment does there is something to be said for the so-called chief of staff, more or less, setting the tone for everyone. And I like a positive world. I like a positive workplace. I try to create one. And again, you can't legislate happiness, but I think there are plenty of things to ease people's paths. One of the things I've done a lot of is apologize to people. If there's any slight, I am free to say, I'm sorry. That was not my intent, and I own my behavior, and I will change it, and let's move on. So in terms of leading by example, I think that's one of the ways to go forward. I'm sorry, could you repeat the first part of the question?
How would you keep, how would you keep yourself informed of the activities of your staff?
Keeping informed, yes. I know one person who calls the highway superintendent first thing every morning. What's going on? What's your plans? What's your? I think he may have reached that point because there was a point where he was not communicating smoothly with him, and he had to establish that protocol. I would check in on a regular basis. I would like to know what everyone's doing, so I can report to you what people's plans are. And it's, a lot of it is getting to know the pace of work in the different departments. And how often is it reasonable for me to ask someone how they're doing? There may be one project that's going to take months, and it doesn't make sense to check in on a daily basis about that. But some things, it's very important to know up-to-the-minute information. If roads are going to be closed, if there's any impact on schools or transportation, anything like that, very important to know that right away. And I would, I would establish a relationship in which it was clear that I needed to know that information, get it up on the website, get it out to you, the Facebook page, anything like that. It's, communication is the key to the smooth running of any level of government, but especially local government where so many residents are involved and directly affected. It's certainly a priority of mine. Some people like phones, some people like texts, some people like email. I'm happy to do whatever's necessary in order to stay informed.
Okay, thank you. You had said a couple of questions ago that you did a good job of dealing with personalities. So, I'd like you to think back, hopefully not too far. And please describe the most difficult employee matter you've experienced. What made it difficult, and looking back today, how would you have handled it differently?
So this is in regard to staff in particular. I think it's also, just as a little sidebar, important to recognize that volunteers helped run the town in an extraordinary capacity. Another reason I'd like to work in at least a little larger town is that there may be a slightly larger bench of people able and willing to work on committees. And volunteers often get involved because they feel very strongly about something, and so dealing with volunteers is something that I would include in my answer to that question.
Okay.
And that said, there have been, there's been a staff and a volunteer situation. Staff can be very settled in their ways, and there may be a policy that the select board would like to move forward that staff might not feel comfortable with, or just might think is a waste of time, or something like that. And that takes conversation low-key over a fair period of time, reiterating what needs to happen, setting timelines, expectations, goals. Because a lot of people, I think most people, if you sort of push them, they push back. So it's a question of finding the right way to lead someone. And again, I think expressing professional expectations is a good way of doing that. And that's happened both with a department head and with a volunteer who I tried to work with for a long time before expressing that I didn't feel that he was meeting the expectations of either the select board or me, and that perhaps he ought to let someone else take his place who was willing and able to do that. And it was a difficult, it was a difficult thing for me to say because he'd also been instrumental in doing some good things. But the time had come for him to move on. Again, in terms of staff, the assumption is that staff are there, they're doing their good job, they want to do the best thing for the town. And so I think coming to an agreement about what that means, and then I can take concerns about, well, they're not considering this. Oh, well, maybe you didn't consider that. It's a two-way street. It's not necessarily this is what you have to do, go do it, but this is what we would like you to do. Do you have any problems? Do you have any concerns? Is there something I can do to support you in doing this? Do you need some professional development and help you feel comfortable in doing what's required to take on this task? Again, more from a supportive point of view, if there's a difficulty. Because the object is to get people to do their best job for the town. And I believe that everybody really is, feels best when they are doing their best for the town. That's the job. And it's great to be in a sector, the public sector, where you really do have a direct effect on lots of people. So that, it's a great mission. And I think I can help people work towards being part of a team with that goal in mind.
So for this person who was instrumental in pushing a lot of things along, but unfortunately, whose time had come to seek an alternate path, thinking back, would you have handled the situation any differently?
I probably would have done it earlier. I, it was, I did bend over backwards because it's difficult to get volunteers, and that was a volunteer position. And I gave the person all the chances that I could think of giving. That also bolstered my case when I brought it to, this is something that I brought to the chair of the select board and said, please check in with this activity. I would like to go ahead with it, but I want somebody knowing that I'm about to do this. And then, of course, informed the board as a whole after I'd done it. I I think I was perhaps overly generous in giving this person time not to do the job.
Okay, thank you.
Describe the approach you would take to address the desires of members of the community to keep it like it is, as well as those in the community who want to see some new ideas, innovations, businesses which may change the nature of the community, but expand the tax base. What steps would you take to address all needs effectively and in the best interest of the town?
I grew up in Sandwich on the Cape, and there were probably somewhere around three to four thousand people when my family moved there. There are 22,000 people there now. Very different town. And I, living where I live now, there is, there hasn't been increased development pressure for some time because of the recession, which stalled things out, I think, in the West maybe a little bit more. I very much value, as I said before, I value the character of this town, its conservation lands, things like that. I think that's a great goal. And one of the things that I think is the best tools, is one of the best tools that the town is using is the Planning Board's five-year rolling master plan review. That is an excellent, that is the prime method for residents to weigh in on all of the different aspects that go into that master plan. So there is a process in place, and I would encourage you to use existing processes where they exist. If there are other aspects of that that are not being covered by the Planning Board, that would be great. I can't think, because it's supposed to be a master plan that encompasses economic development and conservation, open space, recreation, all of those things. I can't, off the top of my head, think of something that would not be covered under that, that you would want to move on independently. And I would be very wary of trying, a process that might that might be perceived as drawing attention away from the existing process that happens. So I think that's the most important point to get across. That said, there are things, there are choices made on a much more frequent basis than once every five years. And the Planning Board and the zoning laws will have a lot to do with that. You have a board of trade?
Economic development, may?
Well, we do have a board of trade also. Yeah.
So in terms of economic development, that would be one, another group that I would work with. I think it's important to bring in I think it's important to bring in all of the institutional perspectives that exist. That's why they were set up, was to deal with those questions. What they might not do is be able to work as well with the conflict, you know, development versus preservation, things like that. Those are ultimately decided at town meeting, probably based on a Planning Board bylaw change. Though, I don't know if you've been having a lot of appeals coming to the Zoning Board of Appeals, or anything like that. That can be pretty contentious and very legally tricky. That's, I was glad to see you had KP Law, I believe, as Town Council. It's good to have, again, a deep bench of expertise where that's concerned. Is there some aspect of the question that I have not touched on sufficiently?
No, I think you're probably good to go on to the next one.
Okay. All right. As the new town administrator, how would you evaluate the current structure effectiveness and efficiencies of the various town departments? And how would you approach making any changes you believed were necessary? How would you evaluate the teams delivering services to the town? And please include any relevant experience you may have from prior employment.
The Department of Revenue is, you might think, an unlikely source of advice for this sort of thing. And in the good old days, when they were overstaffed, they were able to work with towns much more deeply in creating, and I do say that somewhat sardonically, they were considered to be overstaffed. But now, without that staff, they are no longer doing reports on municipalities as much as they used to. And they had teams of experts that would go out and look at the whole structure of town government, and say, "Okay, this is what you're doing now. You need to work towards doing this," you know, and moving towards best practices. I looked at a number of studies that they'd done, and they were all different, because towns were all in different places. And I asked them once, "Is there some kind of matrix that's behind these reports that you're putting out that says, 'Well, if the town is here, then we need to get them here,' but if the town is here, then we need to get them here.'" And they didn't seem to have any kind of organized manual that they were working from to do that. So, a lot of it depends on what actually exists now. One of the main things that is available now that wasn't around a long time ago is the Commonwealth Compact, Community Compact program. And I don't know if you've signed on to any of that, yet that's excellent.
Extensively.
Because that is, that is a good source, both of funding and of ideas. The list of things that they have, that they fund regularly, is a checklist for best practices. So, that's an excellent place to look for, say, in financial things. Do you have a long-term financial plan? Do you have good financial policies? These are also things that would help your credit rating. And I believe having a town administrator who is also the Finance Director would also help your credit rating. They look at management structure as they're doing that, as well as financial policies. And do you have a long-term financial plan and capital planning? And I know you have a capital planning process. So, that's a, that's a good checklist to use. And in Conway, they were, they had just had that done by the Department of Revenue. And the Treasurer Collector had checked off already about a third, a third to a half of the, of the things that needed to happen, that they had said, you know, "You've got to get your act together here, 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 and here." It also helps out with the annual audits. You can get early warning about things such as the lack of timely reconciliations between the accountant and the treasurer, and not have it wait until an audit. So, I would look for all of those sorts of things, as well as, just, you know, my own experience. Is the Emergency Management Director getting the Emergency Management Planning Grant every year? Yes, you have the trailer right out there. No doubt that was an EMPG grant. It could have been a MIA grant, you're in MIA too, so that would go either way there. There are innumerable specifics. But in terms of the checklist, the Community Compact is the best checklist that I know. That said, I would have my own, and it would be, I would have to go through deeply in each department to figure out, you know, where can we get, what's reasonable to do in a short term, what's, what do we need for the longer term. I think one of the most important things is the financial planning. And I don't know what your financial policies look like right now, but that's one of the first things that I'd look at.
And if there were changes, how would you go about making those changes? Or how would you approach making any changes?
Always good to have a third-party recommendation. So, doing a Community Compact grant for something is excellent in order to get an outside person's opinion.
Yeah.
And their idea of priorities. Again, there are short-term, easy changes, and there, it's just a question of, "This isn't too hard. It'll help the town a lot. Let's, you know, can we do it for next month?"
Yeah, certain things might not be too difficult.
"Can we do it for the next budget cycle? Or is this something, you know, we're going to have to be working on, you know, tweaking the, tweaking a five-year financial forecast? How long is it going to take to set that up?" And how, I think, I think that's reasonably, that's actually easier than it might sound. And the Department of Revenue has been promising a template for that for almost a year now, and they haven't gotten it out. The small-town administrators are still poking them to see when they might come out with that, because that really would help a lot of towns. So, again, it depends on the specific.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Long one. Take it in parts. Good, ready? Here we go. Town Administrator plays key role, and an active role, in community development rated, related to issues in Berlin. The town wishes to expand its tax base. However, there are competing thoughts as to what type of development is desirable, and how to control the development in order to preserve community character. Tell us how you will help the community answer these questions, and what approach you're going to take to achieve consensus. And then I'll wait on the other half.
Yeah, that's great. Always nice to expand the tax base. You have one of the more aggressive split tax rates I've seen. So, I think you've done all that can be done in that capacity. For, some of this does, again, come under the economic development, community development process that the Planning Board should be, should be doing. And I would check in to see how they've evolved with that over the last couple of iterations of the master plan, because they're supposed to be asking people, "What do you think?" You know, and really dealing with the discrepancies that come up. That's, that's one of the jobs of creating the master plan. And then you get something that is theoretically a consensus document, not consensus in the sense of 100%, but in, "This is the best that we can get of a picture of what most people want." And there are some tools that can be used in terms of the community character. I don't know if you have design guidelines for new construction. That's pretty easy to do, and you base it on, you know, what do you already have, and how can you make it look similar to what is here, rather than have things that came in and, come in and look like they're dropped from plastic land, or, but I noticed you have a lot of rock here. So, I suggest rock should be a part of that design, design specifications for new development. For what type of development? I don't know if your, if your Board of Trade looks at the different types of businesses that there already are in town. That would help you figure out whether or not you need another one of something, or not so many of that. If you had 10 banks, maybe you don't need another bank. On the other hand, if you've got lots of people doing banking, maybe you need more banks. So, that's, I would certainly look to what had been done in the past first. And I know that some of these arguments go on for a long time. Again, coming from the Cape, Sandwich had the first major sign control bylaw, and it's been copied all over the state. And it mandates, you know, no interior lighting, only exterior lighting, signs of a certain size. I think some of the materials may be, may be specified. But there are definitely ways to do that with, with design guidelines. And that can go a long way. The other thing is, and I mentioned this in one of the pieces of, one of the materials I sent in, that some towns have found village-centered zoning, or different ways to phrase, they started saying things like cluster development, then people didn't like clusters, so they started calling it open space development, because it was really preserving open space, where you have a transfer of development rights from the open space to a smaller area, so that you have the same number of units that might be built, but in a smaller footprint. There may be areas of town where that might be appropriate, and you could get more growth with less of an impact on the acreage of the town. And I got to say, 10 square miles is, is pretty tight.
And then to finish up my question, didn't think that I'd let you off the hook that easy. Speaking of the tax base, as in other towns, there are concerns about the size of tax bills, and some will point to the town administrator as a determining factor in the size of the tax bill. Describe the extent of the relationship between the town administrator and the tax bill.
I had nothing to do with it. It's all town meetings' fault. And in a technical sense, that's true. Certainly, the town administrator, in making recommendations to the Board for warrant articles, might have something to do with what goes forward one year or another. And I would hope to work closely with the Capital Improvements Planning Committee to make sure that whatever capital expenses the town had were reasonably spaced out. What I look for is a fairly steady tax bill first, because, you know, you might be able to lower it one year, but then it might go up again the next year. This is sometimes seen by towns who think that if they, if they have a free cash windfall, they're, "Oh, pay, you know, apply it to the tax bill, lower the tax bill." Well, unless you lower the operating budget by the same amount, it's, your tax bill's going to double the next year. So, that creates a volatility. And I think volatility hurts people as much as the actual level itself. A high tax bill means that your property is worth a substantial amount of money. And I don't think that even if the assessors could do it, which they can't, but even if they could, I don't think anybody would want to lower their tax bill by lowering the value of their property, except, you know, maybe some farmers who are land-rich but cash-poor. So, I would, oh, allow me, you'll find this, I hope you find this of value, even if you don't decide I'm the best fit. But this is a document I put together for Conway, and it's largely an educational document. Oh, and the appendix, which is the final figures, I know, small.
It's okay.
There it is.
Can you hold it?
I can send the files. I can use the files if you hire me. So, the, there's a lot of education, I think, that needs to happen around town finances. A lot of people don't understand anything. We've, we've started, I think, being a little bit more projective in terms of letting people know what's going on, and the budget is part of that. I put that out as, "This is a balanced budget," and I had put it out in February, I think I might put it out earlier, based on your own budget schedule. This, that contains our budget schedule, but you'll see how it works. And I publicized the heck out of that, and I print up hard copies for people who want to come in, and I probably, probably distributed 20 hard copies right from, right from my desk this year. And it's based on the Government Finance officials' model budget. I don't hit all of their 17 mandatory points for, "You have to have this," and they have another dozen or so non-mandatory points. But it's an educational opportunity, because people ought to know how town finance works, not on as deep a level as the Finance Committee or the assessors. But I think it's a great idea to have an evening where people can come and talk to the assessors and say, "What do you do? You're the guys who set my tax rate. What's going on with that?" Have, have an evening that's, that's not right before tax bills are due, you know, where, where people can, can come together and, and learn about things. The Treasurer, tax-collecting functions are pretty, they're more complex than most people think. And having people understand that will also give them an appreciation of what's going on in the town offices. You know, it's, it's difficult stuff. It's, it's not easy. Try to get somebody to explain how the foundation budget works in the schools. Thank goodness, we don't have to do that. We'll let the schools try to do that. But it's, it's difficult, and, and there are parts of it that are, you know, questionable and political, and that's how things work. So, people need to know what's going on. And I think once they know what's going on, and they see the recommendations, telling, oh, you'll notice that the, in that impossible-to-read piece I put out, because it's so small, this was available as, as an addendum to the budget before town meeting. And it said, "This is how much all of these things are going to spend." And it, towards the bottom, it says, "This is the estimated tax rate, and this is the estimated levy, excess levy capacity, and this is how much free cash we're going to have to roll over to next year." And it's pretty simple, but it gets all the basic points across. The problem is that probably not many in town actually know the best way to read that. And I think all towns should work on having evenings, we do have a pre-town meeting where people come in and ask, can ask, can focus on a few of the most important items, or as they choose. But we, I think there's a lot of room for getting people into Town Hall, talking about these things, understanding how they work, making it available, making the materials available online, even if they can't make it in. Those are all really easy things to do. And that, I think, would help me in having to explain why I'm such a spendthrift.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything, that was the end of our questions. Is there anything that you would like to ask us?
Yes. Yes. Couple of things. What was the...what was the straw that broke the camel's back? Or I hate to use that...such a violent and cruelty-to-animals metaphor. But what was the tipping point...there we go...of deciding to have a town administrator for Burma?
I'll just speak for myself, and I will just say that this is a very extensive job for volunteers. As we get to a certain point, I would say that is...and the fact that needing better communication, where, you know, some of the board members may have jobs and aren't able to be here on a day-to-day basis, the communication can be lacking.
That's...that's actually the...if there were a single aspect of the job that I like the best, it's being that communications hub. It's...I had that in my previous career when I worked for the trade association, probably so I mentioned. I was doing a lot of that, and it was all policy-oriented, and I had to check in with a lot of people about a lot of things before making...putting something down on paper. And I loved that. I liked being of use to people by giving them information, and I liked the feeling of knowing if this piece of information comes in, it's got to go there, there, and there. And that's...I really liked that part about the job. So that's good. And yes, the complexities are outrageous. Town administrators, and I think small-town administrators are a little bit different from the larger-town managers who have...who are much more managerial in directing other people to get things done. Small-town administrators are generalists. We have to know enough about a wide variety of things. It really is extraordinary. One of the things I never thought I'd be involved in was emergency management. And now I know that under the NIMs ICS protocol, I can function as the admin finance officer. And I actually have some concept of what I'm supposed to do. It's amazing. I'm not the incident commander. I'm not well-trained in that system, but I know enough to know what I need to do during an emergency. And I never would have imagined, you know, that that was part of the town administrator job. And yet, it's an absolute given in a small town. So it's good to hear that you came to that realization.
Yeah.
Because there are a lot of things that can slip through the cracks, and compliance can suffer. I think in Western Massachusetts, they still invoke Daniel Shays as a reason not to have to comply with laws from Boston. But with any luck, they're getting over that. So yes, I would feel very good about dealing with both of those issues.
Well, I thank you very much for this evening.
Did you have anything else?
No, I'm good. Okay. I want to thank you for coming and spending some time with us so we can get to know you, and it's been a pleasure.
It has been a pleasure for me, too. I thank you, and you certainly have my best wishes for the town.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Margaret Naris, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, Peg.
Hi, Peg.
I'm Chris.
Hi, Chris. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, and we've actually met through town management.
That's right. Yes, nice to see you.
I'm Steve.
Sure.
Thanks again for coming.
Well, thank you very much for inviting me.
And we have some questions.
Sure.
And I'm going to let Lisa start.
We're sure that you did a great deal of research as a candidate for this position. Please give us your impressions of Berlin. Tell us why you're a good fit for this community, and what will you bring to this town that may be lacking?
Wow, that's a loaded question, so hopefully I don't go on too long. Yes, I did do a lot of research. First of all, I guess I'll just brief you on my history. I have nearly 30 years. I have over 30 years in public service, and nearly 30 of those years are in municipal government. I have 13 years of experience as a small-town administrator, and small-town administration is really where my heart is, although I'm in a large town at the moment. The research I did on Berlin, and the reason why I chose Berlin to apply to, is because for a small community that has had no central administrative function, it has accomplished an incredible amount. Sometimes it's hard to see from the inside, but when I was looking at Berlin, I saw a town that, first of all, the 10% affordable housing threshold, an extremely difficult threshold for small towns to achieve, because of...often because of lack of transportation, infrastructure, and things like that. So I saw that. I saw a town that had become a green community, a town that had adopted, has adopted CPA. You did that at your town election in November of last year, and you're now working on getting your bylaw approved for the CPC. I actually attended your town meeting on the first night and watched some of the proceedings. So I saw a town that has accomplished an incredible amount without a central administrative function, which signaled to me that you have very, very strong leadership through elected and appointed boards and committees, and strong volunteerism. And that is...and that is sometimes a rare commodity in small towns. So that really attracted me to the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
And what will you bring that may be lacking?
What will I bring that may be lacking here? Okay, so the central administrative function would be unique to the town. I think, like, as far as departments, the day-to-day operation, day administrative operations of the town, departments tend...without the central administrative functions, departments...it's a necessity that departments rely on themselves to operate. I firmly believe in team, concept management, and bringing people in departments together to achieve the town's missions and goals. And so, to the extent that that may be lacking here without the central administrative function, I believe that I can bring that change here. And I think that I have the ability to get people to buy in, to contribute their expertise and their talents toward the greater common good.
Can you describe the relationship between the town administrator and the select board members?
The town administrator works for the select board. The town administrator serves as the agent of the select board, as the chief administrative officer on a day-to-day basis. I've always seen my duties as trying to guide the board and facilitate the board's work. So the board is a policy body, and I see it as my job to implement or to help implement those policies that are directed by the board.
Great. Okay, Peg?
She's still writing.
Well, it's still writing, no, because it...you had made a comment where the TA works directly for us, the board.
The town administrator is answerable to the board, to the select board.
To the select board. But one morning, the chair calls you and directs you to handle a...see, you led, like, right into this, so thank you.
Oh, yeah. All right, I'm ready for it.
All right. So one morning, the chair calls and tells you...directs you to handle an issue that is different than what we voted on. What do you do?
All right. So first of all, ethics would...ethics would guide in this situation. The board is a public body, and the board can only act as a public body. The chair nor the members have the ability to make directives or to give directives outside of the body's jurisdiction. So I would...this is similar to a question that was asked with the preliminary screening committee. I would communicate with...I would talk with the chair, or if it was a member, a member, and explain the rules, the rules of open meeting, conflict of interest, and things like that, to see if I could possibly reason with them. If necess...I obviously could not act on the directive, so I would...if it came to that, I would have to reference the law, and hopefully reason would prevail. And if not, again, I would just have to rely on the law. But I've never...I have to say, in my 13 years as an administrator, I have never encountered that in the various communities, and I hope that communication would be effective in that case.
Well, your answers actually go right into questions two and three, so thank you for doing that.
No, I do not know these questions ahead of time.
So the follow-up questions are that the chair tells you that she speaks for another member of the board, and that this matter was discussed in executive session, but a reliable source tells you that the selectmen have been discussing the matter with others.
Oh, okay. Again. Again. So the benefit to me currently, being a town clerk and clerk of the council, means that I've been very, very close to the open-meeting law. We've been going through...in Amherst, Amherst has been going through a major governmental transition with a lot of brand-new counselors who are very new to the open-meeting law. So it's been out there, and we've been doing a lot of work with that. So, all right, first of all, matters discussed in executive session would have to be posted as such. There are very specific reasons for entering executive session. I would...this is interesting, because I would expect that I would have been in that executive session with the board. So if...if a board member...and this is something that I've been, you know, I've been attuned to in the past, not that I've had blatant...not that I've experienced blatant disregard for the open-meeting law, but again, I would have to speak with the board member who either...I think if I understood your question correctly, who reported to me that...you said a board member reports to me that they're speaking for another?
Correct. The chair tells you that she's speaking for another, and that this matter was discussed in executive session, but it's been talked about all through the town.
Oh, okay. So...
You're not going to like my other question.
Okay. Okay. All right. So I would have to have a conversation with them. And not only that, the open-meeting law acknowledgement forms that are required to be filed by members of public bodies are required to be filed with the town clerk as well. So I think it's expected that the member of the public body, whichever public body it is, if it's the select board or another body, they should have received the open-meeting law guide and signed the acknowledgement notice, acknowledgement of receipt of the open-meeting law. I would have to remind them of what the open-meeting law requires, and that matters in executive session must stay in executive session. If...obviously, the damage may already have been done, but I think at that point, I'd have to do my best to mitigate any further damage.
Okay. Thank you.
Berlin has excellent department heads. Describe the town administrator's role and relationship with department heads. How would you establish a leadership position? How will you promote communication and teamwork within and across departments?
At the very beginning, I've done this both as a first administrator and as a successor administrator. At the very beginning of my tenure, I'd say within the first month, I would want to meet one-on-one, have discussions with department heads, allow them to get to know me, and I would get to know them as well. I'd be very interested in what their department's needs are, what current issues are, what they...what they're looking for in their budget, what kind of unique issues they may be experiencing. That would be right away. I'd want to meet one-on-one with all of the department heads, and I'd want to reiterate what the administrator's function is. Berlin has done a great job with the special legislation that was adopted, the job description, and so there is a very clear dictate of the town administrator's duties. So, you know, I think that we would...I would encourage a conversation with each of the department heads, maybe see if they could express any concerns to me about this change. It really is a change. It's not just a change in operations. It's a cultural shift. It's a big change for small towns. I've been a first administrator, and I understand what it takes. But after meeting one-on-one with all the department heads, and I also have an open-door policy, they could come into my office, and I would hope that I'd be welcome to go to the other departments, too. But I would hold regular department head meetings. I've...in both of my former administrator positions, I've held monthly department head meetings, but I don't conduct them in a top-down kind of way. I conduct them as roundtables, where I will brief all of the department heads on what's happening with the board at the top executive level in the town, and then we go around the table. I want department heads, I've always wanted department heads, and myself, to share what's going on in each other's departments, because something that's going on in one department is relevant to other departments, whether it's directly or indirectly. We're all working for the common good of the community, and I believe that having that roundtable discussion, talking about what we're doing, promotes discourse between department heads where they can further collaborate on certain things. I think I gave an example at our prior interview of a project that our council and...our senior center director was looking to do, and the police chief took note and offered his assistance with this initiative. So it gives department heads an opportunity to collaborate with each other, and I think that builds team.
How will you keep yourself informed of the activities of your staff? How would you promote a positive work environment?
I lead by example. I always have. I am a very hard worker. At the same time, the things that I expect of myself are also expectations of staff. I think that we all need to recognize that we have a responsibility to pitch in and do our part. I feel...could you just repeat that question one more time? I want to be able to speak specifically.
How will you keep yourself informed of the activities of your staff? And how would you promote a positive work environment?
I would expect to work physically close to my staff. I have always wanted to have...I have always had an open-door policy. I've always wanted to work not in a back office, but somewhere where I can... I think I gave an example and at our prior interview of a, a project that our council and, our senior, senior center director was looking to do and the police chief took note and offered his assistance with this initiative. So, it gives department heads an opportunity to collaborate with each other and I think that builds team.
Okay. How will you keep yourself informed of the activities of your staff? How would you promote a positive work environment?
I lead by example. I always have. I am a very hard worker. At the same time, the, the things that I expect of myself are also expectations of staff. I think that we all need to recognize that we have a responsibility to pitch in and do our part. I feel, could you just repeat that question one more time? I wanna be able to speak specifically.
How will you keep yourself informed of the activities of your staff? And how would you promote a positive work environment?
I would expect to work physically close to my staff. I have always wanted to have, I have always had an open-door policy. I've always wanted to work not in, not in a back office, but somewhere where I can hear and see the, the people in the community coming in and welcome them into the office. That not only allows me to interact with the public, but it allows me to interact regularly with staff. And again, I think that promotes teamwork. I do not believe in, in an administrator or a manager closing themselves in an office to get work done. Yes, once in a while, we have to have meetings or we need to really focus on something, but those, those are infrequent. I, I would absolutely have an open-door policy where employees, staff, community members, board and committee members would all be welcome to come in.
Terrific. Okay.
You had let off and said that you've had multiple years in public service. So, along the way, I'm, I'm positive that you've encountered a difficult employee matter.
Sometimes that happens. Sometimes that happens.
So, what made this difficult for you? And in looking back now, should you have handled it differently?
One came to mind when you asked this question. It was a very sensitive personnel matter that I won't expound on too much, but it, it deeply affected the employee involved. It resulted in, in discipline, unfortunately, but it was a matter, I consider myself very compassionate. I care about employees, I care about board and committee members. So, personally, I, personally, I struggled with it. We did take steps, the necessary steps. We had progressive discipline in place. We also had counseling in place and we exercised every one of those steps until unfortunately, there was, there was a situation that required further action. I don't think I would have changed anything in the steps that we followed because in that particular matter, we, I communicated with the employee very closely. I showed genuine concern. I offered all available resources to that employee and ultimately, it was, it was a tough decision, but the employee was, was unable to actually comply and, and we did, unfortunately, it ended in, in separation. So, but I don't think we would, I would have changed anything because not only did, what we did was by the book, but we also showed, and when I say we, I mean myself and the board. We showed genuine concern and compassion and sensitivity to the employee. Everything was, was confidential. The employee was given options. So, it was difficult. That was one of, one of the, one of some of the difficult employee situations we had. But in that particular case, I don't think I would have changed anything.
Okay, thank you.
Describe the approach you would take to address the desires of members of the community to keep it like it is, as well as those in the community who want to see some new ideas, innovations, businesses which may change the nature of the community, but expand the tax base. What steps would you take to address all needs effectively and in the best interests of the town?
There is something on the town's website. When you click on "About Us," not only about the 41,000 bundles of asparagus in 1885, but, which is great, that would get Hadley some real competition, but about, there's, there's a statement there that says, "The town embraces its tradition while cautiously moving forward plans for its future." And when I did the research on the town, I thought that just encapsulated the things that I had found. I, I have, in, in both of the communities I served as administrator, I was very big on, on coordinating public forums. We had speak-outs, we had listening sessions, we had stakeholder meetings. And when there's something, when there's this balance to consider about preserving the tradition or preserving open space and competing with development, I think it's absolutely essential to bring the community in, to have a discussion, to talk about the, the benefits and the challenges of making, of making changes. I think it's healthy to bring everyone in the community together and I think it's especially important to bring different perspectives together so they can talk clearly. Sometimes it requires facilitation to maintain a respectful, a respectful discussion, but I think that's absolutely essential in finding that balance. Berlin is, is one of those communities, you know, it's bordering a, the city of Marlborough. There's a lot of commercial development around the town and meanwhile, the town treasures its open space and its agricultural heritage. So, it's, it's essential to, to balance the, the want and, and I'm sure some people feel the need for growth with the preservation of those traditions and the heritage of the town. And I think that can only be done through broad community conversations.
As the new town administrator, how would you evaluate the current structure, effectiveness and efficiencies of the various town departments? And how would you approach making any changes you believed were necessary? How would you evaluate the teams delivering services to the town? And please include any relevant experience you may have from prior experience or employment.
First of all, I do know that in this town, as well as some other towns, both other towns I serve, there are some elected officials who hold staff positions and I, I respect that. I know that those who hold elected positions are answerable to the voters. So, I believe in working with them and in their cases, directing change, in fact, in all cases, directing change, in my opinion, is not the best course. I think it requires a lot of observation and I think it requires some self-awareness on the department's parts as, as well. So, departments, I think department heads know their departments best. I understand that and I would like to hear their perspective of what they feel needs to be changed. I do believe that we are here, all of us are here, to serve the public. That is what we do. And in the case where a department that might not feel that that is their most, their most important objective, there could be, there could be discussions and we could just have, we could meet to talk about how best to serve the public. I, but then again, I don't believe that anyone who, anyone who is leading a municipal department truly feels they are not there to serve the public. I think this is why we are in municipal government. So, I was going to actually add something and I, I just lost my train of thought. Again, I think through the meetings with department heads and individual department heads and through department head meetings, I think that we can all remind each other of what we're here for and, and the greater, the greater mission, so. Okay? The effective, sorry, to the effectiveness of the departments. Again, departments have been, I, I'm sure departments in large part have been self-sufficient here. That wouldn't change. And when I come into a community, in both communities I've, I've served as town administrator, I believe in taking small steps. I do not believe in coming in like a proverbial bull in a china shop and making wholesale changes. I think that we have to evaluate the systems that are in place and take small steps toward changing, toward changing things that need to be changed.
Good, thank you. All right. Last formal question. The town administrator plays a key role, a key and active role in the community development related to the issues in Berlin. The town wishes to expand its tax base, however, there are competing thoughts as to what type of development is desirable and how to control development to preserve the community character. Tell us how you would help the community answer these questions and what approach will you take to achieve consensus? And then there's a part two, but that's kinda long, so we'll just go with that one for now.
The planning board and zoning board of appeals have undoubtedly, and other, the board, the select board and other boards and committees, given the accomplishments of this community already, they've, you've undoubtedly thought of this and how to balance the town's character with new growth. I would see myself as a facilitator, again, to engage the community. If, if I was fortunate enough to, to become Berlin's first town administrator, I would make a continued effort to attend the appointed board and committee meetings as well as the select board meetings, to see how best I could facilitate their work and engage the community in, in their objectives. So, that's, that's how I see my role with, with the boards and committees.
So, the part two to that is, speaking of the tax base, as in other towns, there are concerns about the size of tax bills and some will point to the town administrator as a determining factor in the size of these bills. Describe the extent of the relationship between the town administrator and the tax bill.
Berlin, like many other, and Berlin, like many other towns, a taxpayer, taxpayers bear a disproportionate share of the, of the taxes. I think in Berlin, when I looked at the DOR data, it was, I think, 63% of the, of the tax levy is residential. I think it is, I, I do believe that as the de facto finance director, it would be my responsibility to, to monitor expense growth, to work closely with department heads to assure that there is manageable expense growth. And I think if, if you're referencing the town administrator in the role of finance director and kind of manipulating finances, I am fiscally conservative. I, I have been in my positions as town administrator. The communities that I have served have been strained like a lot of small communities have been. And so, monitoring expense growth and also monitoring the available revenues and revenue projections is going to be critical. The goal is to, is to achieve a balanced budget while balancing the needs of the departments with the quality of services in the community. So, I would hope that through my efforts with managing the expense growth, working closely with departments to make sure that they can maintain quality services without, without a great deal, or actually, I shouldn't say that, without exorbitant expense growth, without, without justified needs. I think that that would be, and that, that process, the whole budget process, I know your finance committee is also very diligent, that whole process has to be transparent. The, the members of the community, the public, need to know that we, including the town administrator, are good, responsible stewards of their tax dollars. So, I would, I would obviously make it my goal as finance director and facilitator for the finance committee and agent of the board, to make sure that expenses, expense growth is, is controlled and that services can still be maintained.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. That's the end of our regular questions.
Do you have anything else you'd like to share with us?
Yes. I, I am from Deerfield. I know that you've seen that in their resume and I just wanna give you a little background. When I, I don't know if, if the, the public has been, has been privy to my, my work history, but when I went from, when I transitioned from the town of Sunderland, which is close to Deerfield, to Rutland, my circumstances were such that I had to commute every day and it was a two-and-a-half hour commute every day and it was wearing on my vehicle and, and it was tiring after a while. And, and the decision that I made to leave Rutland was extremely difficult for me, but going, going back to Amherst was a familiar place, to a familiar position and a closer commute. My circumstances have changed such that I would be able to relocate to the town during the week in order to be close to the community at all times and I, I just wanted to be sure that the board understands that I would not be commuting every single day. I would, I would relocate. And I also, I think I also need to reiterate that small-town administration is, holds a special place in my heart. That's, that's what I've done and I feel that my engagement with the communities I've served is testament to my, my commitment to small-town administration. So, I hope that you consider that in your decision.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
I actually have only one. I know you have a few upcoming, you have a department head vacancy with your building commissioner and a couple of capital projects coming up. But the one, one of the things that I wanted to, to ask was about the recreational marijuana establishments and that all of the articles were passed over at town meeting. So, I was wondering if there has been any interest by, by recreational marijuana establishments in the town, whether it's cultivation, retail or anything? Has the town, has, has anyone expressed an interest in coming to the town at this point?
I, nothing yet.
Nothing yet?
Actually, we did get an email to some effect this week, or was it last week? Something with some interest. I don't know if you wanna share anything more, Tim, or if you know anything more than I do.
People are, are pursuing the, what the opportunities might be given our regulations, but our regulations are rather restrictive in terms of where and green space and stuff like that. So, so far, most people have said, we'd be Hudson and something maybe.
I don't think I have any other questions at the moment. I just wanna say how, how impressed I was looking at all, researching all of your accomplishments. Berlin has done a tremendous job, really.
Thank you.
It's due to a lot of very good people.
Yes, yes.
Clearly.
Thank you very much.
For having me.
Safe trip home.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's freezing. Hi, everybody. This is gonna be the first time in a while that chairs are turning. Okay. At this point, I was wondering whether we all need to stretch our legs and take a little break or?
Just go right into executive session.
What your pleasure is?
I'd rather just go into executive session.
Oh, do you want, do we not need to discuss, deliberate, discuss?
We can do it here, if you'd like, if that's the?
Yeah.
If that's the thing, okay.
We have to, actually.
Yeah, we have to do deliberation in executive session, just the, the contract in executive.
All right.
So...
Who wants to start? Is there any candidate that we can rule out? Like an absolute, if you were to go, one, two, three? Do we have a three?
Well, I think maybe we should just say at least a little, I think they, they were all good candidates.
Agreed, agreed. Well done to.
Very good.
Thank you.
To you and the committee.
Thank you.
Sending folks along.
You attracted them, we just followed them.
I mean, it, it was a, a lot of good town administrator blood there, so I don't know if there's things that I didn't take very good notes, so I think...
Do you have a feel for who you want?
I do.
I do. I do.
I do.
Okay. On the count of three?
Okay. How about we try that?
Okay.
Okay.
Are you serious?
I'm serious.
One, two, three. Ready? Serious? Okay, ready? One, two, three. Margaret. Do we win for the record time of deliberation?
And who said we don't agree?
No, no, agreed. That's a valid point. If we kind of know who we want, then the other candidates were.
The candidates were great.
I just wanted to give everybody a chance to talk, because I didn't know how you felt, so. All right, well.
The motion would be in order.
All right, then.
I move that we hire Margaret Norowitz for our town administrator.
Do you want to use?
Oh, is there language?
Yeah, number four.
All right. I move to authorize MRI to make a conditional offer to the ultimate town administrator candidate, conditioned upon satisfactory background investigation and successful negotiation of terms of employment.
And that candidate is?
That candidate is Margaret Norowitz.
So seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that the quickest deliberation?
Pretty close to the quickest one. Come on, we got, that is the quickest.
All right, we'll give it to you.
You win that prize, and that is, I think that speaks very well to the town. It's going to be a pleasure communicating that to her.
It does speak very well. You attracted the candidates, not us.
Yeah, and the way you did it was.
Well, I think we're all very proud of this town, and.
You should be.
And, you know, I'm glad that others were attracted to the community.
I mean, the research that all of them did, you know, whether they were quoting the town website, whether Tom was driving up and down the road, I don't even still know the names of the roads in town, and I've been here forever. And, you know, Kristen is a great note taker, so they all came with tremendous skills.
Thank you for saying those names.
And I'm sure that Tom and Kristen will make a town very, very happy.
Yeah.
So thank you. Appreciate it.
They'll be watching, they'll be looking for feedback to their candidacy and how they did.
Correct.
And beyond what we said, what you're saying now is going to be helpful.
I really think it was just fit. I think Margaret's just a good fit here.
I do, too. The experience of a first, having been a first town administrator for another town, she knows probably a lot of what to expect.
Well, and because I got to sit closer to her, when she was talking about the employee issue, you could see. You could see that it wasn't just like, ugh, that it meant something, you know, and you could see it.
Emotional tears.
Right, you could see it in her eyes. So, you know, being able to do the job, but having a heart and having compassion is going to go a long, long way around this town.
Yep. Wow. I think everybody, thank everybody for coming. Boy.
Good job, you guys.
I think you have a good match, a good future. What we will be doing is calling all three candidates tonight. We will indicate to Margaret that she is the preferred candidate. We will indicate that we will be working on a document with her, and we will be talking more about that if you do go into executive session.
Do you?
I don't think there's more that needs to be done.
Yeah. So I will ask the board, do you want to go into executive session to discuss the important issues of the contract this evening or since MRI is here?
Is it easier if we do that while you're here now? Would you prefer that we do that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Then do I hear a motion to go into executive session, Mass. General law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel?
What's our key item?
Key fight.
Stone eye.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we coming back? We're done?
Yes, we'll only return until the session is adjourned.